You ready? Okay. This December twenty seventh meeting of West Vincent Township Supervisor's Board of Supervisors will now commence. Everyone, please stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its essence. I am here to help you with this call of justice.
Okay, first order of business, I want to announce that there was an executive session on December four for legal discussion. Next, we're going to have approval of the minutes from November.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Go ahead, your second.
I will second that.
Any discussion? See you none? All in favor? Aye.
Wait, George raised his hand.
George, you gotta be quicker.
Were the, I guess, these weren't posted on the website? Oh, they were? Okay, I didn't see them. I'm sorry, I missed them. So, did the December fourth meeting happen or not?
Apparently neither December meeting happened, so we're getting a do-over.
I'll explain.
Okay.
At the beginning of the year, January, all of the meetings are published in a public newspaper or general circulation, not just on the internet, Huskian Newspaper. Last January, Kathy, our secretary, was out with COVID the entire month. Tina, who had never done this job before, stepped in. The manager, who shall no longer be named, did not give her instruction to advertise the meetings. So when we got a letter from an attorney saying they wanted proof of the meetings, Dave asked me for the actual petition proof. We couldn't find it. And so it turned out that Kathy thought Tina did it. Christina didn't know she was supposed to do it. So it's a thirty-day statute, so anything that happened in the last thirty days didn't really happen. So we just are redoing everything that we did in the last two.
In the last thirty days?
Yes.
So actually, none of the meetings this year were advertised, is it?
Yeah, but it's.
But it doesn't matter because.
Just the last two meetings, the December fourth and the summer twenty-seventh meeting, that we just have to redo everything. For a couple more weeks, if we didn't look back, we would have been fine.
So those meetings don't exist, or do they?
They exist. There was a, there was a thirty-day statute, which means all the other meetings.
No, I mean, they, they, you, you have to redo any business that you carried forth there. But everything else is still there. So do you have minutes for those meetings or not?
The recordings would still be there, everything.
No, not the recordings. Do you record minutes for them?
Yes, we won't approve those minutes until the next meeting. We're just redoing twenty-seventh and the fourth.
So you'll redo, will you actually have separate minutes for the fourth and the, and the eighteenth?
So.
And tonight?
Yeah.
And then you'll do all three of them?
Yes.
And I guess in January, you'll approve them? Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is the police report. trouble?
The police report for November twenty twenty-three is as follows. Number of calls for service was one hundred and fifty-three. Number of crimes investigated was twelve. Number of arrests was two, including theft of services and disorderly conduct. Number of traffic stops was forty-five. Number of accidents investigated was ten. Training for the month included advanced traffic stops and active shooter training. And that concludes the police report for November twenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Moving on, the treasurer's report, Jackie.
It should be unchanged from the last meeting, correct?
Yeah, it's the exact same as last week, just missing a page. Wait, Bernie has it. I'll just do it. Okay. Our fund balance is one hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents. General Fund has a balance of eight hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and ninety-three cents. The Open Space has a balance of three million, six hundred thirty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and twelve cents. Liquid Fuels has a balance of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Capital Road Fund has a balance of two million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Capital Project Preserve Fund has a balance of two million, four hundred twenty-nine thousand, eighty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. The Capital Equipment Fund has a balance of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-four cents. The Suer Fund has a balance of twenty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and seventy-six cents. And the Rebuild Fund has a balance of eight hundred fourteen dollars, eight hundred fourteen thousand, ninety dollars and fifty-two cents. For a total fund balance of eleven million, one hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy cents.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Oh, sure. We don't normally do that, do we? I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Okay, next is expenditure summary or bills list.
Okay, the expenditures for the General Fund were nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents. An expenditure for the Open Space Fund was one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. For a total of nine hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and eight cents.
Okay. Once again, entertain a motion?
Okay. I will vote to, I'll move to approve that.
Go ahead, your second.
Which you just said.
Do have question.
Are you going to second and first and then issue?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay. Go ahead. Questions?
We need access for months. Oh, thank you, thank you. The top of, for example, the profit and loss detailed page has twelve, fifteen, twenty-three as an address date. And it says accrual basis. I thought we moved to a cash basis months ago.
We did.
Well, why would we still say accrual on this report?
There, there are memorized reports, and I didn't go in and change them, but I will do that.
Thank you.
Very good. Uh, any other comments? All right, seeing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next, managers' report.
Okay. As you know, I gave you the fee schedule. Um, we need to, I met with Casey Lilon, Tracy Franny, Christina, Kathy, and myself. Um, and we went over all of the fee schedule line by line. Because we're supposed to at least break even on permits so that residents aren't paying for other people's permits. So we've redone the fee schedule to match what the fees are being charged from the zoning officer and the building code official so that the township could break even. So I want you to review that, and we need to approve that at the rework. Um, Opalani Park, I spoke with Jessica Adams, and um, she needs to um, get the final plans done soon because um, for the, I'm, I'm sorry, let me talk about the Trail Stars. The Trail Grant will expire in June. So she wants to go out to bid for the trail um, in early, uh, early February with a start date of March first, so that everything can be completed by June fifteenth, which is the expiration date. So um, we're moving towards that goal. Um, we just have to get um, the easement signed by Mel. We had to make some changes that regarding the fence and the gate. Um, we did get that, and I sent that description over to Jessica so she could change the plan. So um, that's going to move forward next month. Um, Opalani Park, I did speak with Jessica, and we do need to discuss the final plans for the park. Specifically, she needs to know where the gazebo is going to go. I know there were some questions. Um, as for the fishing pier, we know that the pond is almost dry. And Mike did have Top Brothers come out, who consulted, and they could not find a water source. So Mike came up with an idea of, he knows that there's two wells over there that were filled in. One's a big well that fed up four hundred fifty-some cows. He believes he can dig that well up and then put in a windmill to pump that water into the pond. So I've asked Jessica to approach the D C E D and the D C N R to see if they would approve that as part of our grant money to get that done. So we're waiting to hear back on that, but that's.
Do we have an idea what that would cost?
Uh, you know, I, I asked Mike, I haven't gotten anything back from him yet, but.
Is there someone else that needs to look at it to see if it's, it's really a viable option?
Well, that's Jessica. Jessica, which is an engineer, so. All right, um, Bob Beskin did begin um, working on um, our QuickBooks last Wednesday, the twentieth. And um, he'll be in again tomorrow and is, is making good progress, you know, working on the books. Um.
You have a projected completion date from him?
I do not. I, I think um, Christina got the impression, I did too, that he was a little overwhelmed by how much he has to do. So I, I will check with him tomorrow and see if he can give me a timeframe.
Okay, but the contract has a not-to-exceed ceiling on it. Is that correct?
It is. The contract is uh, I think two hundred and fifty dollars an hour, not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
And he had stated that he needed to um, be completed by January fifteenth. So um, if it's more work than he thought, you know, more so than the money, is, is that going to be a problem that he's going to be able to complete it?
Well, the contract's the contract. If it takes him more time, he's still.
No, I mean, is he going to physically be able to complete it? I thought he had maybe another job to move on to.
I'll, I'll ask him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, old business, approve the township manager contract. Do I hear a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the contract for the township manager for Jackie Gunther.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion? George, Larry. George, get up first.
So I took a look at what was posted, which I guess, uh, I guess we're kind of doing this backwards from the way we did it last time, but um, I didn't see any expiration in the contract.
There isn't a time limit on it.
So, according to statute, it can't be longer than two years.
It's pretty much an annual one because they would have to reappoint me at every rework.
But the contract doesn't expire at that point, so.
Well, they would redo the contract.
Oh, then why not make the contract? State that.
Or why didn't we identify what we're recommending as a solution as an error on someone else's contract?
Just, I, I don't know, we talked about that with Dave, and he felt that it was, you know, a contract that could be ended by either party at any time.
Yeah, but I mean, the statute says it's got to be, it has to be ended in two years. So if you do nothing.
Well, if the statute governs, then that's what it is. We don't need to repeat it in the contract itself.
No, the statute says that the contract can't terminate later than two years after effective date.
Can I have a hand?
Dave, are you listening?
Yeah, Dave's trying to call.
Dave, go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, the, the, the statute is there so that you don't have an agreement that specifically is longer than two years. This is a real contract, so it doesn't have any length of time at all. So it sits within the statute. The board can terminate uh, the manager at any time. There's no um, there's no length of time at all on this contract.
But I, I see an issue there because it says the board can terminate the contract. But that assumes that the board's all in agreement to do that. And it says, not only does it say it can be no longer than two years, but it also can't extend beyond the date of the Board of Supervised Organizational Meeting following the next municipal election.
Right. And what, what happens is, is the board, the next, after the next municipal election, the board will then vote whether or not they wish to continue this contract. It's often ended uh, for a reason. So it can be, uh, the manager can be terminated or the contract can be extended. It's at will, um, so that there's no, uh, the, the point of that law is so that a board, an outgoing board can't saddle a new board with a contract for like five years, which was what was happening. Uh, and so there's no term on this contract. The board can fire Jackie tomorrow if they wish, or uh, anytime during, uh, during her tenure. So I don't agree that this contract violates the statute.
Okay, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, so I'll take your word for it. The other question is, uh, the contract says it can be amended by the board um, at any time. Is that something that would be done publicly?
Yeah, it would have, it would have to be done publicly.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Larry Stone, sixteen forty-five Bertrand Road. Uh, I, I'm worried about the, the haste in which this is being done. Now, this position was not advertised, number one. Number two, we do not have a completed audit. Number three, we do not have a budget that's, that's easily readable. It's, it's, it's a mess still. I, I think that uh, before we put out this contract, we should have done all three things. But let's at least get uh, the audit finished. And let's get a, a clean version of the budget. I understand you have to vote on the budget for legal reasons uh, this, this month here, but that doesn't mean it's a good budget. I think we ought to wait till we get a good budget before we give this person a contract. I think this is just going too fast. I don't see the need to go fast. Why? What is the need? What's the need to hurry up?
Well, it's just, I was on a six-month probationary period. Everybody else gets ninety days, so it's not that fast.
No, I, I think it just gives her position some stability. And like we just said, we could fire her tomorrow.
Well, uh, I don't.
So it's, you know, like, but she has a contract that makes her pay secure, and if she leaves, she gets a designated severance.
So this is all for the security of Jackie? That it's not being done in the interest of the township?
I think that they go hand in hand. I mean, we want to keep and maintain our, our township manager at this point. We're, we've been happy with her in general. I mean, you may not be happy with some of the outputs, but a lot of that has to do with um, the backstory on that budget. So, you know, right now, I think it's, it's, it's in as good a shape as it can be at the moment. And it is in, it is, um, you know, we're no longer at a deficit.
Well, okay, I think it's more important that the township uh, make sure that the person they hire is really going to do the job. And until those two things are done, I don't see how the township can be sure of that.
And so far, she has done a great job. So.
But she hasn't done the two things I mentioned.
She has been working, she came into a mess, a big, huge mess.
That was six months.
And she has been chipping away.
That was six months ago.
I understand. Well, there's a lot of things.
Larry, if we didn't have her here, who would get this done? We need her.
Well, that's why you advertised. That's why you advertised.
But you advertised for someone to jump in the middle of a huge mess. I think we need to ride the horse through this. She's doing a great job right now, working very, very hard. And I think that we owe her a little bit of stability for a period of time to see that, that she can get us where we need to be.
That, that, I'll, I don't argue with that. We do not owe her a stability. But, and, so we disagree on this.
Okay.
I've said my piece.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff.
Good evening. Uh, Jeff Goldberg, three forty Sundance Drive in Chester Springs. I never thought I'd be standing up here and say this, but this group of supervisors has done one hell of a job in picking a damn good manager. This, she's been here six months. If you don't know someone's metal, after six months, you never will. Going out and advertising for a new manager is rolling the dice. You could get somebody who looks great up front, get them in the job, and they're going to screw up. You have a known excellent quantity here. And to have people come up here and say, well, you know, maybe we should look elsewhere. Um, you want to talk about dragging something out? I just don't think it's right, and I don't think it's fair to her. I don't think it's fair to you folks, and I don't think it's fair to the township. She's had six months to prove herself, obviously, from what the three supervisors have said she has. Let's move on. Let's not beat this dead horse. Let's just move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate that.
Well, Tom Swak, you know, I would like to correct Jeff is that I have not been somebody who said she was doing a great job. Just wanted to get that straight.
Oh, no, it's twenty thirty-four Pottstown Pike. First of all, I think you got your priorities, as usual, not correct. Priorities are to the taxpayers and the residents of this township above all other things. Everything else should be subordinate to that. Everything. That's number one. Number two, I always have heartburn with jobs that aren't posted to the open market and are looked at, researched, and done that way. Jackie may be the greatest township manager on the face of the earth, but the process you've used has put that in question. Terrible. You have no process and procedure here at all. You just make it up as you go along. And the very fact that we're all sitting here tonight, coming at her on a twenty-seventh of December to, to play let's, let's do-over is absolute proof of how bollocks up this place is.
Barry.
Barry Deluver, ten twelve Pottstown Pike. Um, as opposed to my good friend Tom Helwig, we've had several discussions on this and we're on opposite ends. Uh, the bottom line is uh, Jackie had uh, a lot of stuff dumped on her. I don't know exactly how much. I just knew the Granger was a problem for three years. Um, everybody knew it. It was public information. It was bad. Um, I, I agree with Jeff. The fact of the matter is, she was in the middle of it. She discovered a lot of these problems as treasurer. She, of anybody, has the best working knowledge of what's going on. I still, look, her decorum sometimes in dealing with some of us has been a problem. And, and I will agree that that has been a problem. Being in that hot seat, it can be an issue. And, you know, the, the things need to be done, but nobody's perfect. So um, while she may seem mean or crass at times and defensive, not the best. Granger did the same thing. You know, it happens. And, and while I'm not apologizing for on it, I think that's the least of the issues when you look at somebody who's being mean at some points. The fact is, she has the skills, things are getting along. Yes, the budget may not be the prettiest thing in the world right now, but there's a ton of stuff on her plate. And I'm going to say it again. Um, I, I would hope that she's with us for the next year and then do another review because the last manager has put a whole lot of problems on us, and I'd just like to see it get fixed. And I think this is the best way to go about it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, we hear so, I'm sorry.
Hi.
I just, just a short one.
Sure.
We hear so often about all of the problems that have been left for Jackie. I think we would all benefit from seeing the list of those problems and how they've been solved or how they will be solved. Because I've not heard beyond not having the what's that other thing besides a budget, but yeah. The audit, without having audit done, is the only thing I hear about what's on her list. And then the budget. But I don't know, what are the other things that John left that were so onerous that they've happened over a period of six and a half months? And they've not been reported to the public.
Well, I, I think she has reported to the public, things like, oh, grants that aren't followed up on. And I mean, there, you know, you could go on and on. I'm sure if we want to do that, do we really want to take up this time to talk about all the things that went wrong in the past? We're trying to look forward. We're trying to get things taken care of. And, you know, and, and I, I just want to say to Barry about um, you know, being mean at times, uh, you know, I, I agree. I, I would like everyone to be nice to everyone all the time, but I would like to say that um, I bet if she was a man, he wouldn't be complaining about how mean she was. Just going to say. I think it's true. I mean, every, you're, all of a sudden, you know, everyone's bitchy because they, they push back.
Okay, Julia.
Julia Brandell, twenty-four seventy-two Flowing Springs Road. So a couple of things, and I think that we need to put this one to bed. Um, I feel like when you have a candidate who is doing a good job and who knows the system, it's always best if you can hire from within and not bring another person into the mix. However, not, this has nothing to do with the Jackie situation. Perhaps we should put policy in place that we will advertise any future jobs. The people do it all the time, and then the same, that person that's been there says, gets the job anyway, but you did advertise it. So is there anything in place, a policy in place that says that all jobs must be advertised?
Not that I know.
Maybe we should do that, and that'll shut everybody up in the crowd.
We will.
In general.
It's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Uh, the crowd will find another way to.
Oh, sure they will. I'm sure they will. But anyway, but I always think it's, you know, if you can hire from within, somebody that knows the system, somebody that's clearly been doing, doing a good job, it's always best to be able to bring that person up instead of go out and get somebody totally new.
Thank you, Julia. And, and the way this came about was not anything shady. I was offered a job in another municipality as a manager.
Right, you said this in the last meeting.
Notice, yeah. And then they asked me to stay. That happened all the time.
Yeah, and a six, and a six-month probation, probationary period is ridiculous.
Right.
And obviously, I think that the reason that it did take six months as opposed to ninety days like it should have was because things were so unorganized from the last administration, who sat up here repeatedly not answering questions, didn't have reports done, evaded questions, gave us half answers, had his head held down at every single meeting. I know that, you know, everybody has their person that they like and their person that they don't like, and everybody just doesn't like the same person in this situation, is all it comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
We, we voted one.
We're voting on her contract.
No, we've decided to do it the same thing as I did the last time.
Okay.
Do you want to say that, what you're doing?
But before. Oh, no, the, the minute takers are not putting that in there anyway. Um, as much as, you know, even if you say this is for the record, it doesn't get into our minutes. Sorry.
Why don't you just make a vote?
There, there's previous minutes where there were ones where you voted with a name. It's actually rather than another.
Okay, so the, the reason I turn to say something is, we have the opportunity now with our accounting operation to advertise for someone to step in there and do the day-to-day bookkeeping operations. I'm, I'm talking about someone to take the treasurer role, but I'm talking about someone who will every day know what bills have come in, what checks are ready to be signed, somebody who's keeping that office running. So I think.
Kathy is actually doing that right now.
Well, we, I believe we did at our last meeting, we did make a recommendation that we would like the manager to identify what those roles are and, you know, what you see, see it as, part-time, full-time, what you feel we need and that we advertise for it, whether we end up with Kathy or not. That's, we're trying to do exactly what everyone's saying and make sure that we do look at our options. I think, you know, most of the board is happy with Jackie right now. So that's another issue.
Okay. Moving on, uh, number six, appoint Bob Beskin to correct the twenty twenty-two QuickBooks.
I'll make the motion to appoint Bob Beskin to correct the twenty twenty-two QuickBooks.
I'll second that.
Good. Any discussion out there? Got Larry's?
A, a question. I, I think when this came up at the, when this came, when this came up at the previous meeting, which is not a legal meeting, uh, it was mentioned that he was going to start right away. What, what happened there?
He started last Wednesday. Meeting was on the fourth. Guess it's the, the twentieth.
I thought.
That's twenty, that's the twentieth.
That's, that's when he was scheduled to start?
The twenty, yeah. So what he said.
Okay, thank you.
One quick one. I'm just looking over the resume. I think I got one, one question here. Wondered how you end up with a Morris Plains, New Jersey, address and a six-ten phone number.
What are we talking about? Which contractor are we talking about? Which contractor are you talking about? Jackie's?
Wondering how that works.
There's a lot of people who have. Yeah.
When you like the number, you don't want to change it.
May as well, maybe as the stuff poured into his mom, I I don't know. I'm just curious when something doesn't line up.
Can I answer that question?
Yeah.
Because people have cell phones. They got cell phones twenty years ago. When he was living in Pennsylvania, he still has his cellphone number. He moved to New Jersey. I deal in real estate. I have area codes from all over the country that are all living right here in Pennsylvania.
I understand that. I have a I I have a I have a number in Dubai right now also, so I'm not clearly in Dubai. However, I'm just curious. It's a curiosity.
Okay.
And did we advertise this or did we just draw this one out of a hat?
I I believe
We did, we did a lot of search.
Advertise it then.
We did not advertise.
Well, I don't think that's true. Didn't we advertise through the PSATs and the the secretaries? Well, there were a bunch of places that you
Yes, we and Kathy advertised it and talked to a lot of people.
Different firms.
We all know, well, at least we should all
Okay.
Proper advertise.
Anyone else? Anyone else? See you none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think this is the one where Barry told me I had to vote no. Because I tried to. Is this Barry? Is this where you gave me my civics lesson?
It is.
Okay.
But you have to vote the way you did before if you want him to do the work and he is doing the work. You know, you can't vote your conscience.
This, this is still conscience and it's still no vote.
Okay.
I do have a related question. And that is, when will our twenty twenty-three QuickBook records be available for the auditors to begin?
The twenty twenty-three books are fine. It's the twenty twenty-two and beyond.
So the twenty twenty-three books are ready or will be after the thirty-first?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, adopt the twenty twenty-four budget. Do I have a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-four budget.
And a second?
I will second that.
Okay, discussion. John.
Now, sixteen thirty-four Hilltop Road in Bertrandville. Uh, I'm not going to go over them all again. I've made numerous contract comments about flaws in the budget to the whole board and the Audit Committee, et cetera. If anybody has any comments, I'll answer them. I mean, they're all, I think, uh, poorly refuted. You saw so you refuted, but uh, my comments stand.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you, John.
George.
Nothing's changed since the last straw vote or whatever we called it, we did in the last meeting.
It's exactly the same. You haven't modified.
There have been some changes. You just added in what came in, right?
Yeah, I hit up today. Actual totals because as they're coming in, I'm updating them. For example, the
The actuals for this year?
For this year, like the EITs are now at two point five and over. So I I upped the um, revenues for next year to two point five five because that's realistic. Now, we're what in a much better shape.
But none of the expenses changed.
No. It was the revenues and the actuals.
It may have.
The one that was scanned online, you guys should tell which pages were changed because you'll see on the bottom where they have dates.
Later date.
Twenty-one versus or twelve twenty.
Last revised twelve eighteen or last revised twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, that's when it was going to come out, which was after the last meeting when we voted on this previously. So to answer your question, this document has been changed. And, um, I don't know if everyone's been given an adequate time to um, review it. And I think somebody said this is kind but it's income, but the page that I happen to open it to is operating budget expenditures, township utilities. So it's probably both kinds, income and expenditures. And it's not all prior to the last meeting.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, see you none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Sarah?
No.
Okay. Uh, new business, approve resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-three. Workers' compensation coverage for Lowry's Corner Fire Company's firefighters and fire police.
I'll make that motion to approve resolution nineteen dash twenty twenty-three workers' compensation coverage for the Lowry's Corner Fire Company's firefighters and fire police.
And I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? See you done? All in favor? Aye. Okay, number nine, approval of resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four tax rate for of two point zero nine mils.
Two zeros. Okay, I'm I'll put the zeros in when I do the motion.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty dash twenty twenty-three. The twenty dash, the twenty twenty-four tax rate at point zero zero two zero nine mils or twenty-nine cents per hundred. I would like to mention the unchanged tax rate. I put that in between twenty-three and twenty-four. Unchanged twenty twenty-four tax rate.
I think he said the cents wrong, but we know what it is, right?
The twenty point nine, yeah, well.
Okay, second?
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? See you done? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, let's see, ten, set the date for the Reorg, twenty twenty-four Reorg meeting on January second, twenty twenty-four. Motion?
Well, we don't show that.
Oh, oh.
Because we have some issues with with the actual account.
Yeah, but that's
Yeah, right?
That's not ten. That's
After this meeting, but we're not voting on it at this moment because we can still amend it. We can still amend it.
But the date for the Reorg meeting is set by law that we will meet on January second.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Uh, number eleven, set date for the twenty twenty-four auditors reorganization meeting for January third of twenty twenty-four.
I acknowledge that date of January third also as a, uh, state mandate.
Good, thank you. Uh, number twelve, approve the twenty twenty-four calendar for the Board of Supervisors and committee meetings.
And that's where we're saying
And that's where
To adjust
We need to table it because there are too many errors in the documents that we've got.
We didn't give you the changes.
But it won't be advertised in time. We had that early meeting on January.
We discuss them?
We're to want to hear them now.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because we got to approve it.
You need them out loud as a new organization meeting. So you want us to read them now?
Not the appointment, we're we're trying to approve the calendar of dates.
Well, yeah, we just approved to post it and then we'll make the changes to you. You, no one knows what they say now anyway.
But you won't have, like, for example, you have, um, Parks Recs supposed to be on the fourth of January, there won't be enough time from the second to the fourth to get it posted.
We have this all written out. We can give it to you as soon as this meeting's over. And so like, we're just agreeing that we're going to advertise it.
This is not your last iteration.
But we're not
The last thing that you sent, we're not good.
We're not approving the calendar. We're approving advertising the calendar in time for the reorganization meeting. But there's just somebody with good imagination worked on the document again.
Christina worked very hard on that.
Yeah, Christina set a monthly meeting for me without talking to me. And Ken Allen would like that. Well, but she could have gotten that stab to us sooner. Um, Ken Allen, for example, would be put in the awkward spot of having to decide which of two committee meetings he wanted to go because Christina has set up a conflict. Did you? Did you move what's on this paper or is it a typo on this paper? So if I have the old one, where would I have found it?
Website, what's been posted?
No, or in an email from
Since we're not announcing this now, can we not just argue about it after the meeting?
Let's not argue. True, let's just get it right.
Discuss it and get it done.
Let's just make a motion to approve advertising.
I'll make a motion to approve the to advertise the twenty twenty-four calendar for Board of Supervisors at committee meetings.
Thank you.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion? See you done? Oh, I'm sorry, Barry.
Does that list have, um, workshop meetings again in it? Um, it's going to be workshop meetings and then other meetings. So it'll be one official meeting month?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we can discuss that too because that was something that came up, um, where apparently we are allowed to do business at a workshop. It's just that this township, once upon a time, decided that it wouldn't. But that's at our discretion too. So we can do business at a workshop if
Okay. Right, the when it was originally established, it wasn't, and that's why they weren't advertised. So I mean, you could certainly do that, but then what's the difference? We did a workshop meeting and a township meeting. They're both township meetings.
Not a mandatory meeting.
Right.
It can also end up being used for some other learning opportunity.
All right.
So we think we've changed some of the wording to make that more clear.
Okay. Um, wait a second.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
And Alan twenty-one Ivy Lane. I apologize if I'm off topic, but it was brought up about the Price and Rec meeting in January. And I don't see it listed on the website.
It's not up there yet.
Got to be advertised.
Okay, can you tell me when it is?
It will not be advertised twenty-four hours in advance if we follow that policy.
Got it. I'll let Bill know. I I think he thought it was the next week, so thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? See you done? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, next, uh, public comment. Barry, are you up there?
Yeah, just real quick, the letter that was sent, um, only requested the advertising for the workshop meeting. And of course, a workshop meeting was not a public meeting. Uh, thank you for having this meeting tonight. So we got to straighten out and you discovered that the other one wasn't advertised, so that's good. But I did have to spend my hard earned money and half a day and my life to deal with an attorney on this thing for what was right. So, you know, sometimes you just need to check into things when people tell you that. So thanks for doing what was right on this and getting this wrapped up. Thank you.
Thank you. Done.
All right, can I be heard on that?
Oh, John.
David.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead, Dave.
Yeah, I I just want to clear up a misconception that I just said. The even though your meetings are advertised as workshops, some of your meetings are advertised as workshop meetings. They are legally advertised meetings. And just because you call it a workshop does not mean that you can't conduct business and vote on it at those meetings, provided that your agenda is published so twenty-four hours in advance. What happened with the workshop that held on December fourth was not that it wasn't advertised as a public meeting and it was advertised as a workshop. What happened is, is that none of your meetings in twenty twenty-three were advertised as they were supposed to be in the beginning of the year. That was the problem with the meeting on the fourth, just like it was the same problem with the meeting on the eighteenth and all the other meetings. So that everybody's clear going forward. You can call it a workshop and you can indicate that you're not planning on voting by calling it a workshop. However, if you put out an agenda twenty-four hours in advance that indicates you're going to consider and possibly vote on an item, you can do that under the law. Just to make sure we're very clear so it'll get into this debate in the future. Everybody have any questions about that?
Dave, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So I just want to clarify that although those meetings were not advertised, they were still lawful meetings. Nothing can be challenged other than up to thirty days. So while some would have been challenged previously, it now cannot because that thirty days has expired.
That that's why you're out. Your entire year of work would be invalid. And so the the law does not allow anyone to challenge the entire year uh, of meetings. So you your meetings took place, you have minutes, they obviously were well attended. So the public was aware of them. You publicized it on your website. The technicality of it being advertised, uh, in the paper was not complied with. But other than that, everything else was. And and for that reason, the law says if anyone's going to challenge the validity of the meeting, it has to be done within thirty days. So, uh, yes, those meetings that occurred, all other meetings that occurred in twenty twenty-three are effectively valid meetings because no one challenged them, uh, before.
Thank you.
That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Barry has a follow up.
What he just said is I was right. Thank you.
Barry. I were right, Barry.
You're really not right. But if you think you are, go ahead.
Actually, Dave, you said something you wanted us to hear most recently. It didn't get through.
No, I I was just saying Barry and I have to have another conversation because he's not understanding what I'm trying to say. So maybe he and I can have a conversation as I do with his attorney, very nice conversation last week with his attorney. So I'll be glad to talk to Barry separately.
Have fun.
Um, Donna Delaney, twenty-one forty-seven Beaver Hill Road. Um, so this when this extra meeting was scheduled, I realized I just had a chance um, at the end of twenty twenty-three to thank you all for everything that you've done for our township and for taking such good care of West Vincent. And I realize you mostly only see people who come to you with problems. And in my lines of work and in my volunteer activities, I have the chance to see hundreds of residents of West Vincent. And there's, um, so many people who have come out and voted for our three supervisors with the huge majority. And, um, you have done everything and excelled at everything that they had hoped you would do. Um, so I'm here on behalf of the thousands of people out there who feel like we live in one of the best places on earth. I constantly hear the words, um, paradise or a slice of heaven. And, um, you guys are the standing up for that. Um, and you must do it out of love of community because I know you don't. The three of you don't get paid for this very much or practically nothing. So thank you. Um, just the shortest list of the things that I'm extremely grateful for this year and that people I talk to are grateful for, the big things that matter. Number one, everybody cares about taxes. No tax increase. Amazing. Thank you. Um, second, urban sprawl. Um, the very best way to keep taxes down and road congestion down and property values high is to take strong action to prevent urban sprawl. And you have done that by taking intelligent decisive action to tighten our ordinances. You have prevented hundreds of houses from being built here. Those ordinances also protect our clean air and water, our woodlands and our farms, and they help protect us from flooding. The smart and innovative actions you took this year honor the trust of the majority of our residents and honor what they want. And I think we all agree we hate road congestion. Um, the third thing is financial. Thank you so much for wisely ordering that forensic audit last year. I I just think that was brilliant and we needed to know that the income and output was properly, is all there. Um, and thank you so much for finding Jackie to be our bookkeeper, treasurer, and then our township manager. And Jackie is a breath of fresh air with her straight talk, transparency, tenacity and financial skills. And Jackie, thank you so much for working so hard this year to straighten out the bookkeeping system and helping our township to run more efficiently. Thank you. Fourth, I'm very grateful to you for listening to our residents and taking action. You listen to people. Um, for instance, road safety. When I talk to residents, most of them say they just love it here and they have no issues. But the one issue that comes up is road safety. We have a brand new road safety committee and you have lowered the speed limits on five roads. That is like a dream of what you would want an elected official to do. Thank you. And this is last, I just want to thank you for supporting our volunteer township committees. Um, West Vincent is famous throughout Pennsylvania for being blessed with many residents who are willing to participate and give back to their community. We are considered the gold standard. Over and over again, other people from other township EACs say to me, they're told, don't try to compete with West Vincent. So our township saves thousands of dollars a year of taxpayer money because we have so many professionals here willing to step up, donate their time, donate their expertise and help our community and create and support our incredibly high quality of life. So there's a much longer list, but as twenty three ends, I, I just want to thank you all and.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you.
Thanks for what you do.
Yeah. Thanks for all your work. Anyone else? Seeing none? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll address you, Dana. I think it's really shallow of you to put yourself inside of anyone's head out here to question why we are saying what we say. Can't speak for everybody else in the room here. I certainly will myself. I spent ten years over an Arab culture. They don't like women too much. Don't like a few things, dogs, a few other things. Came time to hire another instructor. And as chief instructor, I had a pretty good, pretty good hand in that process. My overlords, a couple of generals, decided, eh, we're not going to hire this woman. And I said, no. I said, she's the best candidate for the job and you are going to hire her and that's, that's what we need to do. And they looked at me like I was crazy because over there you get fired at the drop of a hat. Offense to that culture is quick and long lasting. Long story short, I told them, I said, you can get a new chief instructor or you can hire the most qualified person. It happens to be this particular woman. They acquiesced to my demand because I guess they didn't want to get rid of me. So don't tell me that what I say at this podium has anything to do with anybody's sex, their religion, their color or their background. To think that is pretty dang shallow.
I accept that. And I, I just want to say to you that I was, didn't know in a way, wanted to say that anyone here was sexist. But I do think that it's very hard as a woman in a position of authority. It just is. I mean, no, you get accused of being of a bitch all the time whenever you're trying to just do your job. So I just would think a little bit of. No, you might not have, but I've felt that as a woman. I've felt people have said things to me as a woman. And I'm just sharing that I can feel a little camaraderie when, you know, when I hear Jackie being um, very quickly attacked. I think sometimes she comes off a little harsher than she needs to because of just that, that just trying to, to fight back that, you know, that authority issue, which no one ever said anything to John. So that's all I'm saying. And he was as nasty as they came in these meetings. And it would, he just didn't answer the public. That was the bigger problem. He didn't answer the public at all. So I appreciate that she does. I do call her out when I think she's saying something that's a little bit rude. You know, we all do it. Is that not true? Right? I mean, we all try and keep each other in check in any way we can. And I thank you for saying that to me because it did feel a little bit like a reverse discrimination. I don't like to be a man hater. Okay? I don't like to be one of those people who says those kind of things. And I apologize and I accept that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I would like to make one, one other quick statement if you don't mind. Um, and hopefully everyone had a wonderful holiday. If anyone had a um, has a live tree or a wreath or garland or anything that they would like to not just throw in the landfill and maybe feed a hungry goat, take all your tinsel off of it and um, leave it at Obalani. They're going to have a trailer there from Saturday till January fourteenth. And uh, the Edge Farm is graciously going to be taking them away and feeding their goats. So better than going in the landfill. Okay? But thank you and have a very happy New Year.
Okay. All in favor of adjourning? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Oh, you want that back? I wasn't.